...nineteen ninety-nine because of electronics and a lot of what we're dealing with. We've always done the discovery for the paper discovery. We used to do hard copies, a lot of it now is scanned and put into case management. We still do some hard copies. I've worked million dollar embezzlement cases that come over in a bank box and those are very time consuming for our staff. I've worked a lot of homicides where there's numerous exhibits and a lot of man-hours into that discovery process. Again, this is unique to a prosecutor's office. We have to provide all that on every single case. The hard part now is electronic discovery. And, you know, we have to copy all the police videos from either the patrol car or the interview, but additionally, I want to illustrate how difficult it is for us with all of the technology throughout the county and the city. So when there's a shoplifting captured at Walmart, Target, or any other store, the get and go, law enforcement goes out and retrieves that. They're not on all the same system that we use for the sheriff's office or the police department on the arbitrator system. It's different technologies that my team has to come in and find a way to transfer it into a format that we can use and then put it into a format that we can disseminate through discovery to the other, to the defense attorneys so that they can view it once they receive that. I think last year, we made over sixty thousand copies of digital media as part of our discovery process. Again, that's unique to the prosecutor's office. We're talking about hundreds of man-hours. You see the cases that we do prosecute that come into court, but there are so many cases that we work that don't come into court. We get between one hundred and two hundred, we call them case status reports. These are cases there where no arrest has been made. They come over to our attorneys. We have to review all of those from the detectives. They can be very thick, they can require a lot of work, we have to watch the videos to see if, see if there's probable cause, if we should be charging it. In the more complex cases, we'll meet with maybe a child victim or a rape victim to go through the process to see if they want us to move forward so that they know the challenges we might have. A fraction of those do get prosecuted, but there's a lot of man-hours that go into cases that we never do actually charge out and I want the commission and everybody to be aware of that. For every felony case, like we talked about earlier, we have to have a probable cause hearing. The vast, vast majority of those we do through grand jury because it takes a fraction of the time compared to a preliminary hearing. If we did preliminary hearings, it would literally paralyze the criminal justice system. But for each of those, again, unique to the prosecutor's office, we have to subpoena all the witnesses, we have to type up the indictment. We have six different grand juries and we spend sixteen hours a week in grand jury to get all of those four thousand felonies through that process to get them on the circuit court calendar, again, unique to our office. I know you know the pains of MRC's law and the responsibilities of our office with victim notifications. Our current victim witness assistants all have caseloads in the three hundreds, people that they have to guide through the system and do letters and phone calls, and it's very time consuming, again, unique to our office. I know you're infinitely aware of what our civil division does, and I know that there's a sense that they're being real sticklers and they're hindering a lot of things, but I have to tell you from my perspective, I have never seen a civil division as compliance-oriented as what we have now. We have sixty years of experience in that division. They are compliance oriented. I know it hinders a lot of things we want to do quickly, but I have so much appreciation for what they're doing. Every department's emergency suddenly becomes their emergency and everybody wants an answer immediately when they're getting bombarded by a lot of different departments and I'm very pleased with the work they're doing, again, unique to the state's attorney's office compared to the other offices. How's my time?
You have four minutes left.
Good.
You're doing okay.
So, to illustrate what that does to us when we have a crime increase, because all those things increase, you know that from listening to me earlier, earlier conversations, our meth arrests went up thirty percent in this county in one year. So we had over, we had fifteen hundred meth arrests in two thousand seventeen, just simple possession of hard drugs, not UAs or anything else. That's roughly four meth arrests a day in this county. So part of that thirty percent increase drove a lot of our other crimes up. It propels a lot of our other serious crimes. I so often see somebody with a possession of meth that then comes in with an identity theft or grand theft or, you know, we have robberies and home invasions. That's really causing us havoc throughout the system and everything we're trying to do. Our abuse, cruelty to a minor under seven went from sixteen in two thousand sixteen up to fifty-five in two thousand seventeen. Our egg assaults went up from four hundred and eighty-three to five hundred and forty-five. Burglary is up one seventy-seven to two twenty. You know about the drugs, pot also went up. Simple assaults went up from three thousand two hundred and five to three thousand three hundred and sixty in one year. And our protection order violations went from three seventy to four thirty-six. Additionally, we've had more car thefts in the last year than we've ever had before. That's part of the problem as well. So when all of these crimes go up and our overall caseload went up roughly twenty-two percent, it's not just the time in court, it's not just the prosecutor's caseloads, it's across the board what we're trying to manage with this current trend. So, I'll hit you up more when I do my budget hearing presentation, but I just wanted to illustrate some of those behind the scenes things that we do as well and I'm open to any questions the commission might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Other questions for Aaron? Commissioner Barth.
Aaron, thank you so much for coming to us again. You know, I don't expect your department or the sheriff's department to solve issues like methamphetamines. Here in Sioux Falls, anyway, both candidates for mayor claim that they'll do something about it. What needs to be done? And I, you know, prosecuting, incarcerating, it's a Band-Aid. What needs to be done to slow the desperate need of Americans to get loaded?
And it's a good question, Commissioner, and we're always after the fact. You know, we're not part of the prevention. I think we play a small role in having started a drug court, which I think has been very positive, and a DWI court and a veterans' court. You know, we need to work on drug interdiction. We need to keep this poison out of our state and most of it's coming up from Mexico, so we need to do that. We need an educational component to convince people not to take this substance that's going to forever change the course of their lives in a very negative way. What kind of despair does it take somebody to take that drug knowing the harms it causes? I don't know, but somehow we have to prevent that. We need more treatment options that are affordable. So fifteen hundred meth arrests last year. I'm looking at that moving forward. Most of those are going to be addicted because of the nature of that horrible drug. Most of them are going to be in our criminal justice system long-term. They're going to cost us as taxpayers tons of dollars. It's not a quick fix. You're looking at eighteen months for a treatment program to be effective and it's not going to work the first time and they really have to want it to do it. So I think the state who has, I mean, we have a meth epidemic as a state. We need to find some treatment facility that's secure to start to address this problem because I've never seen it this bad. You know, the meth dealers used to carry guns, now the meth buyers are carrying guns so that they don't get ripped off. We're seeing, you know, an escalation of, you know, drug rips, shootings, double homicides, you know, it's, it's bad, but we need to do something. I know we can't incarcerate our way out of the problem, but we need to hold people accountable, especially the drug dealers pushing these poisons, because we can't continue with a thirty percent increased trend in the state.
Additional questions, Commissioner? Benega, did you have a question?
I was going to ask, you already partially answered it, but when you send something to the grand jury, what percentage of those go to the next step? Is it a pretty high percentage?
The vast majority. Sometimes we'll just test out a witness or a victim to see how they do, but most of those cases have already been screened by our lawyers to make sure we meet the elements. We don't always know which witnesses will show up or what they're going to say, but they've been pre-screened to make sure, at least from the front side, we have probable cause that we feel we can meet our burden there.
And the video clips that we have a significant number of, if you will, and the copies that go to all the different entities, that was really a city technology change, wasn't it?
You know, there was a technology change, you know. My office has highway patrol vehicles which have a different system that take up a lot more space than our arbitrator system and our PD and our sheriff's office. You know, we've had increases in, you know, the types of videos and things. You know, years ago, not every storefront had a camera inside or outside, so we've just seen an increase across the board. You know, in a perfect world, I really need an IT person internally to do that because I have three retired law enforcement investigators doing it. They don't do any investigating, they don't serve subpoenas, they don't do witness interviews, they are copying electronic data all day, every day. So moving forward, budget-wise, I really need somebody internally to help take that on because we don't have the personnel to handle it or the specialty to do that.
If I can ask one more question, and nobody here is going to say that you're not overworked. We know there's issues in the community that need to be solved, but do you ever have time to step away from your administrative function and go somewhere to look at other states' attorney's office throughout the country and say, "This is different than how we operate," and what ideas you could bring back to us for discussions to help you solve your problem?
It's been really nice having Mark Vargo as the new state's attorney in Pennington County. The state's attorney before him did not have any communication with our office. Mark Vargo and I are very close. In fact, when he got elected, he came out here to see how we do things and he and I have both done that to bounce ideas back and forth. We're always emailing, "How do you do this? How do you do that? What are you doing?" You know, when we had MRC's law, we worked together to see how we're going to respond to that. And, you know, Pennington's the only one really close that is similar to us, that we can have that dialogue and learn something. So, we've really benefited from having that friendship and that relationship with Pennington County. And we have tweaked things on both sides to increase efficiencies.
Is there a national association that can help you with that also? Because if we continue to do the same thing the same way, we're going to get the same results, obviously, but, and we are making changes. That's not the issue and people are working very hard to try to fix that, but there needs to, we need to find something that may be electronic or whatever that can help us with intense labor discussions we have every year.
And I'm part of the National District Attorney's Association and they have quite a bit of data on their website that we get emails and updates and a lot of information nationwide without me having to spend, you know, time or money to travel out of state.
Okay.
So there are resources out there that we've tapped just to get better ideas and we do, you know, national emails with other state's attorney's associations and things to make sure we're doing things the best we can.
Commissioner Bender.
And just along those same lines, I may be wrong about this, but weren't you able to go to a conference like in November, December?
There was. There was a prosecutor conference that was paid for by an outside group and I was one of, I think, twenty that were invited. It was an invite-only conference for targeted, more efficient prosecution and how you can try to manage caseloads that are unmanageable. And had a lot of resources and a couple of webinars and conference calls after that. It was a good opportunity and I did learn a lot there.
Additional questions?
Thank you all for your time.
We realize meth is a huge issue and education is lacking in this state. Some of those programs, I think, have been cut in the past and if we're going to dump all this money on the end, it doesn't make any sense. We need to be dumping money on the front end because Aaron's right, as far as you get these new fifteen hundred people in here with meth charges today, we got them for a long time. It'd have been a whole lot easier to save them on the front end than to wait to throw them into jail. Commissioner Bender.
I mean, I'd just like to chime in on that because I know when my kids were in middle school, every school you went into had lots of education and terrifying posters and, you know, I mean, there was a lot of positive conversation among kids and the funding for most of those have all been cut now and it's, it's not even just saving money on the end, it's saving lives. I mean, those are just lives that are just
Wasted.
Wasted, yeah, ruined.
Yeah. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is a brief presentation from the Dell Rapids Ambulance Service. Ryan Cedic. Good morning, Ryan. If you would do the same, we give you ten minutes and identify yourself.
Good. My name is Ryan Cedic. I'm the manager of the ambulance in Dell Rapids. I'm not going to stand up here today and talk to you about a bunch of numbers, how many calls we did in this area or that area, because you have that information on our funding application and other resources for that. Several years ago, I was cleaning out my office and I came across this nineteen eighty-nine GEMS, Journal of Emergency Medical Services magazine, had this rolling farm field on it. Front cover says, "Rural EMS, Will America Fund or Foreclose?" And what I found interesting about this is that it was a realization that the problem we've been facing in our rural and even sometimes our urban EMS systems is not new. We've been struggling with this for the last thirty-plus years. As I dug into the article and I read some of the comments that providers made from around the rural areas, they were things like, "Most of the young people do not stay in the area, they move to other communities. We don't have enough funds available to operate. We should be funded by the state." "My greatest frustration is the lack of respect for the tasks I do and the dangers I encounter. It's easy to start to feel like the ambulance takes up most of your life. You can begin to feel unappreciated. Not having enough funding to pay personnel what they deserve. I wish we could have more folks become EMTs." This is from nineteen eighty-nine. We're saying these same things today, thirty-plus years later. We're saying these same things. "I feel like we have done a fairly decent job of putting Band-Aids on our EMS system here in Minnehaw County for the last thirty years. We've been very good at identifying the problems, whether that's lack of Medicare funding, whether that's having insurance companies basically create legal extortion against us, whether that's blaming the county for opt-outs, whether that's blaming our cities for not, lack of volunteerism. We've done a really good job at identifying our problems, but we have not done a great job as identifying solutions." And we need to move forward with that. Now, what I'm, I feel very confident about moving forward is that your three, your ambulance services in this county, not just the three rural services, the three volunteer rural services, but all of us sat down along with Commissioner Barth and Benega, you were there as well, for how many months did we meet? Ten months? We met with city leaders and we developed what we feel is a fairly good ordinance for Minnehaw County. And being able to work together to create that, I think, gives me some hope that in the future here with some continued conversations, we can continue to strive for a permanent fix, some stability to our EMS system. I always think the first question we need to ask a community is, "Do you want an EMS system?" And I think if we asked that question across our communities, everybody would say yes. The second question we need to ask is, "Are you willing to pay for it?" And that's where the question becomes tough. There is not going to be a way in our county to not have a rural EMS system without subsidies. But we are very appreciative and I think we have seen the support from our city leaders, our county leaders, our townships, that everybody is pitching in for that. But again, we come back to, "We've done a pretty good job putting Band-Aids on. What are we going to do to fix this long-term?" If I had that answer, I would not be standing here today. I'd be making a lot of money as a consultant. But we need to identify that solution and that only way that's going to happen is if we, as ambulance services, as city leaders, county leaders, continue to sit down and have discussions about what that funding may, or what that solution may look like. So, that's my lead-in, I guess, all right? What is Dell Rapids doing? So, like I said, I don't want to sit here and talk a bunch of numbers with you, but I'll tell you a few unique things that we have been doing in Dell Rapids to help with some of our stability. One of the first things we, that I want to talk about here is that, it was about three years ago, we had noticed that we had moved billing companies because our old biller had retired and we switched billing companies. We noticed that our revenue was not where it was supposed to be. It was declining to the tune of about sixty grand and we realized that was a huge problem. And instead of going to another billing company, instead of finding another biller to outsource to, we opted to invest a little bit of money into bringing that billing operation back in-house. And so with some investment in personnel, training, education, some software, we brought our billing operations back in-house. Slightly more expensive than outsourcing it, but we felt like we were going to have better, better control of our revenue streams. Along with that plan, we had decided that once we got our billing up and running, we were going to, we were going to start doing billing for other people as well to help offset that cost. I'm proud to say we have brought in our first client this last fall and we are now billing for them, which is helping offset our costs. And we're looking to add additional agencies here this fall, coming first of the year. We'd like to bring on some more clients. We're not out trying to make a bunch of money as a billing company, but what we're trying to do is make sure we do a good job with our revenue streams and then try to find people that we can partner with to do a good job for them as well. And what that does for us is helps save us money in the long run. So, there was a little investment upfront, but it is saving us in the long run. The other unique thing that we do in Dell Rapids is for the last thirty-plus years, we have operated our Safety Town program, which is essentially a day camp for four, five, and six-year-olds. That program is funded primarily through a small registration fee along with community donations. I've estimated that we've probably educated close to three thousand youth over the last thirty years in that program, which is amazing. And I sure hope that it has and I would imagine it has had an impact on their lives. Hopefully, it's saved somebody some traumatic experience. And so that program is still going strong. We still, we're seeing about a hundred youth a year in that program. We run it from June through the months of June and, June and July, so we run about eight Outside of that, I want to ask you if you have any questions for me.
Questions for Ryan? Commissioner Bender.
I just have one question, Ryan. What do you think your capacity is to help other agencies with your billing system? It sounds like not only have you done a good job with your own organization, but you've increased revenue, it sounds like.
We have a little bit. We've obviously brought it up from the year that we were down. We came back up to where our previous biller was billing at. So, here's the interesting thing. We have the capacity to help. We've been talking to other county services in Minnehaw County about helping with their billing. I think it makes sense, not just that we can help them do their billing and maybe save them some money, but we can keep the money in the county
Right.
Instead of sending it somewhere else. So that is something we've been talking about as a group. But billing is weird. If you really want to talk about just some crazy mess, go into ambulance billing, not just medical billing, but ambulance billing by itself. I'll give you just a quick rundown here, kind of how this works. If we do an ALS run and we bill, let's say we had twenty miles that we transport, so we bill a base fee of, let's say, eight hundred dollars and a mileage of thirteen dollars a mile. So that bill would come up to a thousand sixty dollars. If that patient were a Medicaid patient, we would collect about twenty-five percent of that bill to the tune of about two-hundred-and-sixty-five bucks. The rest of that gets written off. It's uncollectible. If it's a Medicare patient, we're going to collect about forty-five percent, maybe upwards of fifty percent depending on their plan. We're going to collect about four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars of that one thousand sixty. The rest of it has to be written off. It's uncollectible, we cannot balance bill. Then you move into the people that don't have insurance. If they don't have insurance, the likelihood that you're going to get paid is probably around zero percent. You're just not going to ever see the payment on that. You send it off to collections and hope someday that maybe they'll pay their bill. Auto insurance, we love auto insurance. It pays a hundred percent. The problem is you have to be the first one to get your bill in, with the exception of one auto insurance company who pays chronological. So if you have to be able to, you have to be the first one to get your bill in, we have to beat the hospital. If there was a helicopter transport, we have to beat the helicopter. And all, of course, all those people know that too, right? So we're all trying to get our bill in as fast as we can. Now, of course, auto insurance doesn't pay very fast, right? So we have to, sometimes, if it's private insurance, you might have a limitation to say, "We'll have ninety days to submit your bill." After that, the insurance won't pay. So if the auto insurance, we might submit it to that, but if they don't pay within ninety days, we've got to keep an eye on that bill and submit it to the health insurance and let the health insurance cover the bill. Then, a year later, when the auto insurance ends up paying that bill, we have to refund the private insurer. So you can see the background work to this. Then you get into private insurance, which is kind of a mess all by itself, depending on what kind of insurance they have. Let's say they have a high deductible ACA plan, their deductible's three grand. Then what we want to do with that bill is we want to hold that bill and we want to wait for the hospital to send their bill to, so that that bill hits their deductible first and we hit the bill after their deductibles met. You can see how this game is played, right? It gets awfully confusing. So, you know, then, then again, you've got your patients that, you know, maybe have met their deductible, they're going to get, you're going to get eighty percent from the insurance or ninety percent, the other twenty to ten percent. We collect that for the most part. Those people tend to pay their bills. And then, of course, if they've met their out-of-pocket maximums, you're getting paid full price on that too. So, we do have one insurance company in the state of South Dakota that, in my opinion, it's legal extortion. What they do to you is they say, "Ambulance service, we're going to, we want you to take, instead of the eight hundred dollar base rate for your ALS call, we're going to pay us seven hundred. So we want you to sign this form and take seven hundred dollars and you're going to write the rest off." Okay, well, we're not going to sign it. Okay, then, we're not going to send you the payment, and that's what they say. And so now that payment goes to the patient. How many times do you think the patient actually turns around and gives you that money back? Slim. So we have to take the, we have to take the, the seven hundred bucks, otherwise we don't see the payment. And it's legal to do that here in South Dakota. So, sounds crazy, doesn't it?
It sounds crazy.
But that's kind of the world we live in. So again, we try to work the best we can with the system. Like I said, we're trying to manage auto insurance versus high deductible plans, we're holding bills, we're, we're trying to get bills in as quick as we can. It all depends on the patient and it takes a lot of follow-up and a lot of manpower to do that. But we're doing a good job and I'm very proud of the two billers that we have. So, can I answer any other questions for you?
If you put this in, if I went into a store and said, "Gee, I need that pair of shoes, but I'm only going to pay you twenty-five percent."
That's not going to fly, is it?
Or I'm going to pay you forty percent.
Right.
Or I'm not going to pay at all. That business would be out of business in no time. If it was mandated that they had to do that, other businesses wouldn't survive.
Exactly.
And it's amazing that the ambulance association or the ambulances survive and I know it's a nonprofit, but it is amazing that it survives with the amount, with the way the rules are written on collections. It's crazy.
It is. It's pretty crazy. We're collecting somewhere around sixty cents on the dollar right now, which is pretty high. So, yeah, it is nuts. I know there is some, you know, there's some, some national movements to try to change some of this stuff with Medicare, trying to, the Medicare has acknowledged that they're not paying us what they need to, to stay in business, but again, we're, they're still trying to find a solution to that. And who knows how fast the federal government will work on that, so.
Any additional questions for Ryan?
At the federal level, we have still have this conversation going on of the, of the urban versus rural reimbursement issue
Correct.
Where we're, how we're classified as a state and how you're classified as a city based on where you're at.
Correct. So, so Medicare, those extenders did get passed in, it was February or March, they ended up getting passed. So there's, the, the big one is in rural areas, you get a twenty-two and a half percent or something like that bonus to your Medicare payment, which is a lot. It's an extra twenty-five percent. You're collecting now quarters of three-fourths of your bill. The Minnehaw County, the entire county is classified as, as urban because of, obviously, our population, especially in the city of Sioux Falls. So we're getting about like a two percent bonus is what urban gets. Obviously, if we were classified as rural, we would be getting more money back. To get into how they figure out that classification is worse than the tax code and I don't understand it. And so I'm not going to try to sit, sit here and tell you that I do understand how they make those classifications, but it is quite, yeah, it's disheartening sometimes. But hopefully, with some, there are, the Medicare is, is starting to do some studies on actual cost reporting, so they're getting, going to get some of that data and hopefully that'll, in the next few years, will, will make some impact, so.
Commissioner Barth.
Ryan, how much trouble do you guys have with frequent flyers, especially uninsured frequent flyers who call you because they
It's hit and miss. We have, sometimes we have somebody that moves to town and we end up, I can think of a couple of years ago, we had one, I think we transported him thirty times or twenty times in a year. Never collected one payment, you know, since he's moved away to another state, he's sitting in collections and we'll probably never see anything on it, you know, but it is part of what we do. So you accept that. So, yeah, we have some issues with that, but it's not, it's not as profound as a larger urban area like Sioux Falls that's going to have more of it. I'm a true believer that no matter what EMS system you work in, you have the same type of calls, the same frequent flyers, the same cardiac arrests, whatever it is, it's just in proportion. So, yeah, we have some, everybody does.
Thank you, Ryan, for coming to the commission meeting and presenting and thank you that it wasn't just numbers. It's nice to hear
Yes, well, like I said
... report on other things that's going on.
I'll, I'll leave here today with just encouraging us as an ambulance organization, as city and county leaders, we have got to sit down and continue these conversations about how to stabilize our EMS system in the county. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment, number, amendment three, to the contract between Minnehaw County and CBM Managed Services to adjust the contract prices per meal in the jail. Warden Gomer.
Good morning. Jeff Gomer, I'm the warden at the jail. Fairly routine item today. The contract we have with CBM calls for a yearly renewal, which, excuse me, allows CBM to increase the per meal cost based on the consumer price index, the food away from home index. This year, that comes in at about, I wanna say 2.1.
2.1%.
Was it 2.1?
Yes, it was.
At 2.1%, which, as you can see on the attached contract, it increases our regular inmate meal, what, 26 cents? Or 2.6 cents, sorry, 2.6 cents per meal.
Might be the only time this year we see 2.1 or, I'm sure everything else is gonna be a little higher than that.
I am guessing as well. It usually is. This one's usually fairly good when we look at the amount of increase comparatively for the year.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, question for the warden. When does, when do we, how long does the CBM contract last? Is it next year?
I don't think so, because we just went to RFP.
Through June 2019.
That's the, that's, this extension goes through 2019, but I believe we're
You can let me know later.
Potentially two or three more. I'll have to let you know. I don't know
Thanks.
the original. I can't recall.
Thank you.
But we just did it here last year, I wanna say.
Last year, yeah.
Time flies.
Yep. Item number 14 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Thompson Reuters for the Westlaw Legal Research Software Package for the State's Attorney's Office. Judy Werkemp.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to request that the chair sign the Thompson Reuters Westlaw contract for the State's Attorney's Office. We're able to negotiate a great rate. The three-year contract price is $58,000, which is actually less than in the past. And this is our lifeblood in our office. This is what we rely on. If the computers go down, it's, everybody's on their phone using Westlaw. So...
Questions for Judy or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is authorize the chairman to sign contractual agreements for attorneys providing counseling for abuse and neglect in conflict juvenile cases. Craig Dewey, good morning. You cleared the room, just about.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. I guess it must be a special day.
I guess.
Like last week, you have some contracts here for conflict attorneys, and RFP was put out earlier this year in February for submissions and broadcast to the entire Second Circuit in the hopes of increasing applications. And as a result of that, even though these are professional services and RFP wasn't required, the county chose to take that step anyway. So, the contracts before you are for conflict counsel for abuse and neglect and juvenile cases. The three attorneys who have been awarded the contracts are Robin Icke, Jamie Weber, and Renee Cruz. The attorneys will be assigned the cases by the clerk of courts, and each of these contracts are for the amounts of $32,000 each and extends for two years. Certainly, as a commission, you also have the authority to continue to evaluate these contracts to determine if additional bandwidth would be required in the future. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Craig? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Reports, or the reports. Okay, I have one, if there's none. This past week, Aaron Serska and I traveled to South Carolina for a day and a half conference paid for by the MacArthur Foundation. There were some slight charges to Minnehaw County because our tickets weren't completely paid for, but the lion's share of our trip was paid for by a foundation. And we worked on, there was a plethora of different breakout sessions, but, or, I shouldn't say breakout because we were all together, but just a couple of highlights that I wrote down this morning, it was, we talked about the movement through the court system and some of the federal state, federal standards, and how local changes have improved the time moving through the court system in that particular county that we were in. We discussed the risk assessment instrument. They had just started that and had seen already about, I think it was a 13% decrease in their jail population since they had started that. Their biggest problem was that they didn't have any alternatives for detent, alternatives on the other side, where Minnehaw County does. And so, they saw some of those people reoffend just because they didn't have the services on the backside. They were still working on that, which I thought was interesting, that they implemented the risk assessment and started releasing people when they had nothing to release them to. But they were working on it. It's all brand-new to them, too. They talked about the community involvement of the police department, which, obviously, that's not under our jurisdiction, but they said their police department had started listening and learning sessions and that, and maybe ours do, but they would go out to different communities. First, they started the listening and learning, and then if it, if the people didn't come to them, then they started going out. They went to churches, they went to school districts, they went to advocacy groups, and they just spoke about what law enforcement does and how can they help them, try to build relationships. And they said that has had very positive effects. They said they, I'm going into the churches, the officers have been praying with the faith-based community, and it has really built their faith-based community to be more involved in community and government side of the work. And so, they've built some really positive relationships there. We talked about the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council, which I've been, you know, talking about for the last probably four or five years, and just they, several of the different counties that were from across the United States, they have organizations like that, and they just talked about the benefits that they had from them, the challenges they have, and how they've worked through some of those different issues. We had a session on racial and ethnic disparities and what they're doing in Charleston regarding that. Simpson mapping, which we have done here in Minnehaw County, they also discussed their Sims mapping. One of the things that they talked about in there was their high population needs, their populations had high, had high needs. The police department had started a pharmacology program, but not like a drug one. It's F-A-R-M, pharmacology. And they go in on a daily basis to those high crime areas, and they bring fruits and vegetables in. They said about 30 to 40 pounds a day, and it's distributed by the law enforcement to try to build relationships in these areas. They said, one, they're high poverty areas, but two, they're building relationships. And they said it's had very, very positive effects on that. And I think we all know that low, low-income areas struggle to have fresh fruits and vegetables. I thought it was very interesting. They talked about their, working through their CTI training, which we also have done. They have a jail mat program. They talked about the successes that they've had with that. We visited their, toured their stabilization clinic, which had a mental illness clinic in it, a drug, I wanna call it mat, yeah, mat program, where it's medication-assisted treatment for people on drugs. They talked about the number of people that's going in, how successful that has been. And they also had one other area, oh, a detox area in there, and they were just getting that up and running. It was an old, decrepit building, and it was working really, really well. And they've been doing that for a short period of time. I don't remember what it was, but they said they've had great successes also with that. And then they also talked about their police department, and obviously, these are counties, but they're talking about their work with their police department. The police department had put one social worker on staff, and they said not only for people who had been, like children who'd been victims of crime, that they could talk to the social worker, but they said their PD was using the social worker just for their own staff members that had experienced trauma on the job, that that social worker was an exempt employee. So, they actually could call her at 2:00 in the morning if they had someone that they wanted to arrest that was, was falling apart, and they could call that social worker and find out, "How do we work through some of the issues that we're going through?" It was a very positive program, and one of the police officers that was there said, "This was the most positive program that he had seen in his whole, in his career of 25 years as being a PD, that putting a social worker in their department had had huge implications of positive." So, it was a great, great conference. We got a whole hour in the city, so we definitely sat in a classroom in beautiful weather and worked really hard. So, it was kind of information overload, but well worth it. It was paid for by the MacArthur Foundation. So, is there any other liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just say, we had a meeting of Metro Communications last week, and, or was it this week? Last week, and approved a budget for next year, which they'll be bringing to us for our share, so to speak.
Okay. If there's none on the, item number 17 is new business. Is there any old business? And I would look for a motion to move into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Parts 1 and 3.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. We will adjourn for this.